We're gonna get started, um, everyone to our. We're gonna get started, City of Chattanooga, work session, our third, um, thank you for three twenty-six, twenty-four. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, who's gonna start for us, Mr., uh, Dan, you start or not?
I'm just gonna say, two things. Um, one is that thank you, um, all for putting up with us through three work sessions on the zoning work. So, I know this is, you know, just new for a lot of, a lot of folks to be going through the entire code this way and really thinking about how to change the code and improve the code. And it's just a lot that we're putting in front of you at one time, and I, again, thank you. Um, the second thing is that hopefully, we're trying to prioritize that we've gotten through the big things. Again, I don't think we, we're, we're trying to keep the changes to sort of modernization, improving things. There is some big questions we'll talk about today related to the mapping. But again, we're gonna adopt, we're seeking council to adopt a new code, um, and then make that code effective at the time when we have accomplished our equivalency mapping. So, we wanna get the code, a new code, do some equivalency mapping, make the map legal, get that council to adopt that, so it'll be a separate adoption. And then when we're done with Plan Chattanooga, we will absolutely be coming back and talking more about other areas of the city that maybe we wanna see different kinds of zoning happen. But that is not the intent right now. The intent now is to have a new zoning code, map it so it legally covers everyone through a separate process. And then down the road, when we have new area plans, we can talk about areas that, um, you know, where we might wanna have a district that has changed, we changed the zoning somehow. But we wanna, we don't wanna mix those up, is I guess my point. I think the mapping today is gonna be really helpful to y'all. We've made a copy of these maps for each one of your districts, and it's much larger scale. So, you'll be able to look at your district and really see where there's, um, different lot sizes, different, you know, where, where things could change a little bit. And so, I think that's very important. Um, as I told, uh, friends of Hickson in the last week, most of Chattanooga is not gonna change substantially through this process. Most of Chattanooga is zoned and developed and a neighborhood, or it's a mall. And those things aren't gonna change very quickly. And so, I, I want y'all to feel that we are on a good trajectory where we're, how we're managing this. And again, we're not in a hurry, but we would like to, you know, move expeditiously. We don't wanna drag it out forever, so. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Karen, we'll go through the agenda.
And we will have a section on maps, but before we get started, I wanted to, most of you know everyone that is part of the core team, um, for the draft zoning ordinance. So, the core team's been, um, Emily, who's the principal planner in Development Services, we know, everyone knows Bronn, and Darren Gilkinson, who's been on this stuff a year.
Six, seven.
I rounded up. Um, and then, um, the maps are courtesy of Lee Bissinger. And Lee is in our Research and Analysis Department. And all the heavy lifting on the map and the equivalency mapping Lee has done, um, and we're very appreciative, so, um, would be remiss if we didn't mention that. Um, so we're just, some of, a lot of it, this stuff you've seen, and I know there's a pulsing dot on the screen, and I do not know how to get rid of that, um.
This is she's.
I'll focus on it.
That's exactly right. If it touches the screen, it goes away, but it comes back, so I'm not, that just happened. Um, so, just a reminder, we've had public meetings and development stakeholder meetings, still working through the input. The input has really slowed down. I think we haven't received anything for about a month, so hopefully, most people have gotten us, um, any comments, suggestions that they had. Um, we ended last, our last work session with a real quick overview. This is the last, um, I think, six or seven articles in the zoning code. So, we worked through uses, we worked through definitions and primary and secondary uses, and the, the table and all the zones. This is kind of the, um, kind of the administration port of, part of it. Um, we touched on it briefly as we were wrapping up last month, or our last meeting, but I just wanted to touch on a few things. So, if you had any questions, and also, so, none of it's new, um, to you, um, if, as you kind of finish reviewing the draft ordinance. The code administration section lays out our current roles and responsibilities, mentions, um, Planning Commission as a recommending body. The application process, note, and notice investing is substantially the same application process. So, I think someone reading that's not gonna really notice the change. And then vesting points back to state law, um, there's a state law requirement for that. We, um, we, the current zoning ordinance complies, and we'll just double check with Phil that everything is, um, still in line with the state law. We did just reference the state law section itself. Zoning approvals, um, it does have same current process, but notes minimum criteria for map amendments. It basically, everything that we talk about in our staff recommendation gets presented to council. It just mentions that those will be items that, um, will be part of the consideration. Um, and then mentions the current process of the Board of Zoning Appeals, including special exceptions, permit and variances.
So, really not much changing at all on administration?
That's right. Well, in zoning approvals, to be clear, that administrative modifications section that we've talked about before, that is in the, in here. And that's where LDO can give a modification to anything that has a number associated with it roughly, but if you're looking for that, that's in this section. Short-term vacation rentals, we're not proposing any change. I think we've mentioned that before. Nonconformity, nonconformities very similar to what we have now. Um, and then enforcement, again, is, is similar to what we have now, so not a lot of changes here.
So, there's gonna be another section when you, where you talk about the difference between bed and breakfast and short-term vacation.
Yes, so, um, you've preempted a little bit, but I'm gonna go ahead and send this, and hand this out, so while you're thinking about it. This is our list on all the feedback we've received to date from council. Um, one of the, um, comments on here, excuse me, one of the line items is, um, yeah, hold on one second. Um, is, we've got two things related to that, I think. One is, underwork needs work, confirm difference between short-term vacation rentals and bed and breakfast, and also had a comment about lodging and boarding homes. I think those are all kind of mixed in together, just making sure there's a distinction. So, um, if we have time, we can delve in a little bit at the end, but these were our notes from everything we've heard to date that needs, um, related to zoning, that we just need to make sure that we've reviewed address, considered, um, or the direction you provided. So, um, while you're, we're working through this, you can look at that and see. Um, so maps, um, we're starting with just a little background, and this is gonna be a little dry, most of you are aware of this. Um, but we are gonna be looking at parcels today. Um, parcels are what Hamilton County GIS uses when we look at, pull up that map, and we show the maps, um, the zoning maps that planning, excuse me, um, during Planning and Zoning Committee. Those, we're looking at parcel lines. Parcels are used for taxing, really, when we talk about division of land, like I need a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, that is a lot. That's division of land. So, we're, um, but that is not found in Hamilton County GIS, Lee's working on it for us. But, um, in this case, we're gonna be talking, we're using parcels. We're talking about parcels, but we know that lots are really division of land, but those aren't available to us. And then when we talk about dividing land, it's important to remember, the zoning ordinance has lot size requirements and also has lot frontage requirements. So, just because right now I have fifteen thousand square feet, doesn't mean that I might be able to divide it into seventy-five hundred square foot lots. There's other items at play. So, it's not quite, we're, we're gonna generalize it a little bit today, but, but to, we are, that, all these other factors are in, um, are in play.
And there's a good example up here of.
Yes, that's.
These are a lot of lots of record, maybe? I mean, you've heard that term, just means it was subdivided maybe forty years ago, or fifty, or more. But then if you see, this one right here has a blue line around it, that probably means one person owns both lots of record.
Yes.
But so, so it's a tax parcel unto itself.
So, right, so this is a, that is, um, this is a manufacturing zone parcel off of, um, Russell Boulevard. Um, there is one, the blue is the parcel. This is a really, this is kind of zoomed in, 'cause this is kind of an extreme example. The red are the lots, I can build on a lot, the tax assessor might group them all together. If one person owns them all, instead of sending you out twenty-five tax bills, you get one tax bill for all your lots. So, we're, we know that those are sitting out there with GIS, we just don't have the option to make the maps. Um, and so, we're using parcels. And a lot of times, particularly, um, in the areas of the city that developed later, a parcel and a lot are gonna be the same thing. There's just, they're just out there, and when we're, we're talking about numbers and showing you, we wanted to be really clear and transparent that we're using a proxy, but there is this little bit of a difference there. And then we also currently have the suburban infill, to make it harder, the suburban infill lot compatibility option. Um, this is a requirement in the current zoning ordinance in the R-one zone that says your frontage needs to be compatible with the frontage around you. So, again, using that fifteen thousand square foot, um, lot example, gotta make sure I have the frontage, and my frontage, um, i- is compatible with that suburban infill lot compatibility option. So, that is a little bit of, uh, the breaks on the division of, of land. So, um, just as a reminder that, and then, um, looking at our maps, we have a couple maps to look at, and these are based on what, um, our feedback from council. Wanting to look at existing lot sizes, we are proposing, um, currently a five thousand square foot minimum lot size within the urban overlay. So, we have, can look at that within the urban overlay. We're proposing a six thousand, um, minimum square foot lot in the, outside the urban overlay, so we have that map too. Um, and then we kind of do just a real quick overview of where we are in the zoning map. So, um, this is where we're kind of, um, I'm gonna, we've got two maps here, I'm gonna move one down for you all to, just however. And then, this, um, and so, um, observation is the existing, um, parcel. So, you would feel for less than five thousand square foot parcels, and I'm gonna occasionally slip up and say lot, five thousand to seventy-five hundred are minimum in the R-one. These are all R-one zone properties. In the R-one zone, the minimum lot size is seventy-five hundred right now. We have seventy-five thou, seventy-five hundred to ten thousand, then over ten thousand.
Since we've got our map guy here.
Yes.
How hard would it be to show me, like, lots that would be twelve thousand?
We have that the next map.
We have it.
Yeah, yes.
We anticipated your question.
Good.
Yes, so this is just to kind of, this was just to kind of focus on all the lots across the city. So, it shows within the urban overlay and outside the urban overlay, um, and just some.
If you didn't hear when, um, some of y'all came in late, for each one of your council districts, we have a copy of this map, but blown up, much bigger, so you'll be able to see it, take away.
I think Councilwoman Bill noted it'd be easier to have one she could really.
Oh, yeah, so can you actually see the name of the streets on it?
Probably.
You should be able, if not, we will make sure we get you the map.
I, I need that, thank you.
It does have a little diagram, so you can kind of see what's happening underneath, and then that might help change.
Okay, okay, cool.
So, within, so, again, just thinking way, within the urban overlay, um, there is a pretty good mix of lot sizes within the urban overlay. So, the urban overlay was, we created, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years ago to say, this is our most urban area, um, it has the most transit, it has the most walkability sidewalks, it's got the smallest lots. And so, we still have the urban overlay, the new zoning ordinance keeps it. Um, and it just, um, there's generally, and we don't have the number broken out, but it's, um, a pretty good mix of lot sizes. And when I say mix, I'm thinking about the five, um, seventy-five and, and ten, oh, excuse me, there's not much over ten.
Not many lot tracks.
Yeah, there's very few R-one zone, excuse me, parcels within the urban, uh, urban overlay that are ten thousand square foot or greater.
See these purple, the ones that are purple here that are, that are in this area?
Mm-huh.
Would be over the ten.
Yeah, so most of them, and then, um, so we are, and then it's a.
Right here, right here, there.
Yeah, that, you see some kind of on the edges on Missionary Ridge, those are, I think, outside the urban overlay.
Okay.
Um, and then your map will show, you know, you'll get better feel for that. Um, and then outside the urban overlay, um, we can switch to the next map, yeah. And this is looking at, um, twelve thousand and fifteen, uh, fifteen thousand square feet. Because, um, I think my understanding from council is, okay, if you're proposing, um, six thousand square foot lots outside the urban overlay, what is a twelve thousand square foot lot that could be subdivided look like? So, we did, the per, so currently a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, we put fifteen thousand on there to show, right now, we have quite a few lots outside the urban overlay that are fifteen thousand square feet that could already be subdivided with kind of that caveat of lot frontage and suburban infill compatibility.
The question is really, what's over twelve and under fifteen?
Yeah.
And there aren't that many.
Yeah, so we noted that we do have that parcels over twelve thousand square feet, they're generally outside of Brainerd. Um, there's a couple pockets in Lookout Valley, a couple pockets in Hickson, Highway fifty-eight, but, um, but there are quite a few, yes. So, we noted that one acre subdivision of seventy-five hundred square feet, which you can do now with all the caveats, is about five, a little less than five, once you get everything done. And then it'll be seven at six thousand square feet, seven one acre.
So, I'm hearing you say there aren't very many, and I'm looking at purple that is greater than fifteen thousand square feet, and I'm seeing a lot of purple.
There are a lot of purple.
You may be referring to, I, I wasn't saying there aren't a lot, there are a lot over fifteen, uh, and twelve, there aren't a lot that are over twelve but under fifteen.
Yes.
Meaning that most of them could be subdivided into two now.
Right, yes.
So, everything that's purple, um, yes, is greater than, the parcels, the tax parcels are greater than fifteen thousand.
So, this could be lots and lots of lots.
Today.
Today.
Today, but it's owned by a single person, therefore, we're considering it a parcel.
Right.
Yes.
And then the other thing that's not on here is topography. So, you'll know there's some of these places that are pretty steep that you would never be able to.
Yeah, she'll say, like, Big Ridge, all of Big Ridge.
Really, the yellow, the yellow would be what we were, we would be looking at to determine.
Anticipate subdivision.
What, six thousand versus seventy-five hundred, right?
Correct, and I think we were trying to show, right, there's not a lot of yellow, there are quite a bit of purple.
And you'll pick up about another lot and a half, you see, from, and when you go from seventy-five hundred to six thousand, it goes from about five point eight dwelling units an acre to seven point three. So, it's, it's only, it's giving a little bit more, um, you know.
And to Darren's, I mean, to, uh, to Dan's point, uh, he, he noted there weren't, uh, contour lines on this for the topography. Most of the available lots over fifteen thousand are very steep and/or in a floodplain.
Yeah.
And there, and that's the rea, I can speak from experience, that's the reason they're not developed.
And we'll do one last map, and I'm sorry, we only have, um, one of these, and so we'll shift it down. And this is one of the things we were asked to show, lots over five acres, and this is thinking about the A-one, like generally, where could someone get rezoned to A-one? Um, and that's one of the things we looked at, that it, a lot of these are under, ownership already for preservation of open space, or open space. They're owned by TVA or T-deck, they're open space properties, either in the floodplain, I noticed particularly along, um, north, um, like, um, North Chattanooga Creek. Some properties are also already zoned R-one with PUDs but haven't been developed yet, Riverton Pops and that Signisite were just two examples I noticed are on here. Um, and then, um, I think those are kind of, another observation is a lot of these are on sloping areas, um, or along the twenty-seven, like the ridges of the, of twenty-seven was one of the observations. So, these are possible to be rezoned to A-one, but a lot of them are already under ownership that would probably.
So, everybody on here could have chickens today. I'm kidding, they're over five acres.
You mean on the purple, in the purple, correct?
In the purple, yes.
In the purple.
But again, a lot of those, if you take out, um, preservation ownership, or school ownership, Baylor owns a couple, I noticed Hamilton County Schools owns a couple.
Everything on this map is in the City of Chattanooga.
That's correct. And it's, um, properties that are currently zoned R-one, so if you put manufacturing properties on there, you get more. But these are properties that are currently zoned R-one that are over five acres.
Most of them are in my district.
So, I think you're gonna find, when you look at the maps, when you look at the maps of your own council districts, you're gonna find, you know, just some interesting aspects to, to what, sort of this question of, of what happens with the R-one and some of these lot splits. As Karen said, on some of these, it looks like you could split the lot, but then if you put the suburban lot compatibility sort of thing in, you have to get the frontage, and it makes it difficult.
You also have to play Monopoly and have the lots side by side.
So, so did I hear you just say, um, even though you have the, you could split the lot, but you might not be able to split it if you go back to having to include the frontage and all this other stuff?
Yes.
Might have enough square footage.
Might, would you have, okay, so then you still couldn't put two of anything on?
Depending on how that.
But to be clear, it's outside the suburban, where we talked about, you gotta think about being compatible, that's only in outside the urban overlay. So, those urban districts, um, that are within the urban overlay don't have that compatibility in place. We removed that.
So, anything in here.
Two years ago.
Doesn't have the urban compatibility requirement.
Yes.
Councilwoman Burges' district, and, and Ken's, and others, yours.
So, you would need to meet the frontage requirements, and I'm sorry.
In my district, in my district, it would have to meet the frontage.
That's correct, and I.
And if, and if they, even if the, it was a lot size that they could divide it, if they could not, if the frontage is needed, am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
You have to have, so, lot size and frontage are important, that's why we said lots are division of land, but lot size and lot frontage come into play, the zoning ordinance regulates both. And so, while we're spending more time talking about lot size, we know that lot front, frontage is also important.
Okay, so, um, then they might not be able to, to split it anyway?
That's correct, if they did not have enough lot frontage.
So, just by.
On the road.
On the road, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because the square footage drops does give you, does not give you an automatic.
Well.
And, and can I clear, 'cause I got, that was the question, the lot frontage, right, is on the road. So, like, this example would be, you see the ni, the even spacing along one of those roadways, that's, those, the lot frontage is measured along those road, is up front of the lot.
From the, from the edge?
Well, like, each one of these, you would measure, that, that's what, that's what you're trying to say, Karen? Is that what you're trying to say, is each one of these, when you're measuring the lot, you're measuring the frontage?
Yes, it's, it would be from the road, and I just looked at Bronn to make sure, so.
It's long.
It's the lot frontage from here to here, that has to meet the minimum lot frontage, that one has to meet the minimum lot frontage, so, um, I.
From a cross, from one end of the street, cross to the other end of the street, am I?
Each of these lots, yes, would have to meet the lot frontage. So, if I wanted to come in and subdivide this into two, I don't meet the lot frontage under the R-one zone.
Okay, so you could not.
Yeah, lot width is better.
You could not, yeah.
If you were a corner lot.
So, that's why.
If you got a corner lot, it's different.
Yeah, if you had a corner lot or an alley, I mean, in, in.
There's different, there's different frontages.
So, the alley that runs in back of my house, I'm just gonna use my house.
No, you couldn't use the alley, though, as a consideration, as road frontage.
Yes, and, and you will have a zoning case coming before you where we talk about that.
Oh, really?
But, but the example here would be where we would, what we have been saying is, I don't have enough lot frontage or lot width to, to build, to subdivide that. So, people might be going in and rezoning to RTZ to, to be able to do something like that, yeah. So, but then we're just talking about the R-one zone itself, yes. And then we do have a couple places.
If you have a deep, skinny lot, even though you might have enough square footage, you don't have enough road, I'm gonna call it road frontage.
Okay, you wouldn't have enough road frontage in order to do it, yeah, okay.
Because if you, if you split that thing.
But they could come and ask for a rezone to.
Well, they'd have to be.
UGC.
Or UGC, you're.
They'd ask for a UGC.
That's a negative.
That's why we're gonna get you some new tools.
Yes, indeed, that's a negative.
The, on the, the purple, are what we're seeing, parts included.
Yes, and that's one of, that is a great point, 'cause.
When you look at the bottom left of this map.
Thirty feet wide.
Yeah, a lot of them are the PUDs, and it doesn't show, the PUDs get their smaller lots, um, which is why they're, I think they're green all over, but it doesn't show, like, the big lot that is, um.
That, that's Black Creek.
Pond, the steep slopes, so yes, a lot of those are PUDs. That was one of our observations too, is that a lot of those, small lots are because of PUDs, and then a lot of the larger properties have a PUD sitting on top of them already.
So.
Yes.
Well, I think the, the, so the question of, you know, when you go from seventy-five hundred to six thousand, it's, it's not just all these properties suddenly can be developed. It, it, it becomes a little bit complicated. Um, if you had a, so, let's say you had a fifteen thousand square foot lot, or let's go to twelve thousand, a twelve thousand square foot lot with no house on it, on a corner lot, you probably could. There's, you don't have to tear anything down, you have a vacant lot, you can, it's on a corner, you can get frontage on two different streets. I mean, those kinds of things will likely happen. I think the thing that, the counter, I would say to a lot of this concern is to say, we actually do, as a planner, want some infill to happen. I mean, I think we want slowly, but over time, we want, I mean, it's just gonna be more affordability in general, if we have opportunities for folks to do creative things and to, you know, help us get, you know, we wanna do it wisely. We wanna do it in ways that doesn't, you know, disrupt the neighborhood, but I think we do wanna help find more ways to have smaller lots and more affordability.
You're also gonna have the infrastructure and sewer to be able to do that, otherwise, it doesn't work.
Yes.
So, I got a question about the map, so is there like, is there a dashboard, we can kind of overlay these, so we can look at them online?
I think we'll be able to do that in more detail in the individual meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like to set up today, and that way, 'cause it's hard to see, you know, this, we have a hundred and fifty square miles in Chattanooga, so what we would propose is having individual meetings with each of you.
Grab my hand, chip and walk me.
Then we can be there, and we can adjust the map in real time based on what you each wanna see in your own district.
Let, let me, let me go back, I wanna make, I've asked this a couple times, and I just wanna make sure that this happens. Before we approve, or as we're mapping, we're getting neighborhood association input.
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That is.
I just wanna be real clear about that.
That's my.
Before we're, we're not gonna change anything until we, like, we're gonna have to do equivalency. I mean, meaning, we're gonna, but I mean, you're, if the question is going from like Plan Chattanooga to upzoning land or something, absolutely, we're gonna have to, I'm sure why.
What does that look like, tell us what that looks like?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna use, I'll use your district as an example. Um, we have an adopted Area Three plan, um, and that's helpful, um, it's still a very large area. I mean, I forget how many neighborhoods in Area Three, it's probably fifteen?
Yeah.
Twenty, I don't even know.
It's more than fifteen, yeah.
So, I mean, that's, it's helpful to give us guidance, but I would say, there's areas that we would like to at least bring before council and talk about changing the zoning in a whole district. So, one of them that we've kind of talked about is, you know, um, Montague Park, all the way to Milltown, from Twenty-third Street to, there's a, mostly a lot of neighborhoods in there. But along Twenty-third, almost all of that is zoned industrial.
Yep.
We just, council just rezoned the Food City, the UGC, so now they can go, they can go.
Most of it's vacant too.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, I mean, we think there could be a better plan for Twenty-third, as an example. Now, the Area Three plan just says mixed use, something like you call it, just kind of a general, says, we should make it more mixed use, but it's not real specific. We wanna do, our staff, our wonderful staff, are gonna do more analysis of this area to come back and say, what should the zoning maybe be on that area? And have a discussion with the commu, community, come back to council and, and change the map.
Okay.
As, so that's just, I'm saying, that's kind of the process by which you would go from the existing zoning, looking at a plan, and then trying to get it in even more detail.
So, does that mean coming to each neighborhood association meeting?
Yes.
And laying it out?
Yeah.
And say, this is.
Our recommendation.
Our recommendations, but we are open, it's, it's y'all's recommendation, right?
Mm-hmm.
At that point, so then you, you.
Absolutely, and, and we gotta do the same thing with all the commercial owners on Twenty-third Street, they're, they're probably not even part of the neighborhood. But I mean, they own the land, so they might wanna know too.
Well, you know.
And I wanna clarify, Councilwoman, we've got about a hundred neighborhood associations on paper.
Uh-huh.
There aren't a hundred neighborhood associations that meet every month.
Yeah.
So, so, are we going to all hundred of them? No.
We need to.
But, but we will be available to the neighborhoods that meet regularly, uh, and that will make time for us.
Community might be a better term.
Yeah, you could be at the roundtable too, also.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, again, I don't know that there's that many places, Twenty-third is a very interesting example, that's why I used it, 'cause it's mostly zoned industrial. It's not, I mean, half of it's not really paying that much taxes probably, there's not, but it's right off the interstate, it's a very visible area when you come into town. I'm just using, using it as an example, but that's the kind of analysis and engagement with the community we should have. And it should be the residents, but it should also be the, the, you know, the commercial districts, 'cause a lot of them.
Owners, yeah, if you live or work there, then you should have a say-so into it. That is, that is.
Absolutely.
Way it should be, not for you.
Special meeting for that area for that.
Yeah, not to be used because you, you don't live there, you don't work there, so you should not have a say-so into how that should come into play.
All right, man, I agree with you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think we're agreeing.
I could see you having, well, like, for example, Frasier Avenue, I think the people who live and work right around it, their, their lived experience is really important to the, to the immediate decisions. But lots of people in Chattanooga, well beyond that neighborhood, also use that neighborhood, so their opinion is valid also, but perhaps weighted in a different way.
Oh, absolutely weighted. Yeah, absolutely weighted in a different way, yeah.
And having, so if there are twenty neighborhood associations in Area Three, but really four of them are really around that area, then a, a community meeting about that area might be the best way to. The best way to get everybody together rather than individual.
Yeah, so, so what we have, what I have been focusing on in District Eight is that any neighborhood association. If Bush Town meets on the first Monday of each month, then we are encouraging. Churchville, Historic Arch, nah, uh, Avondale, uh, Riverside, Fort Worth. Everyone to come to that meeting as well, for each of them to, and it has been working well. So that everybody can really know what is going on, and then you can have the support of each other. In order to do whatever is best for your district and your area, because eventually it's going to. We're gonna have to connect hands at some point, so you wanna make sure that that's a. Good connection when you don't, but if you're not there and know what is going on, even the businesses, we don't ever leave the businesses out. We, I personally call, and say, hey, the meeting is this Thursday or this Monday. You, you, you have your business here, so please come, give us your thoughts and your ideas. Okay.
Yes, sir.
How would you, you guys advertise that far as?
We, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, it's difficult to get folks to come to public meetings, particularly commercial owners.
That's why you gotta go to them.
The commercial owner could be in another state, so, um, I think you start with, we've sent letters to every parcel owner. You know, and and we've, obviously with community groups and with neighborhoods, it's a little bit easier, cause they might have, um, regular meetings. We, we might have their leaderships, um, kind of emails and things. But I would say, when we start doing an area like what I was just describing, area three, we're almost gonna have to walk around and hand deliver letters to people. Talk to the business owner and say, oh, you're not the owner of the property, well, we're gonna let that person know, we're letting you know. I mean, you just gotta have a lot of, cause today, it's just so hard to get folks' attention, it's so hard to find out where. And get them, you know, interested, and it just takes a lot of work. It's, it's not, it's not one thing, that's for sure, you gotta hit them in a lot of different ways.
So Dan, I hate to be, play this card, but I will. When you meet with a neighborhood or a community and you suggest to them. Changes to increased density. I would probably say not one of them is going to say, bring it on, so what are the other benefits? Well, I mean, I'm looking around the room.
Well, I mean, my, my North Chattanooga section would be fine with it, literally, yeah, yeah.
Even though they're, this is the hill city that does not want anything besides R one?
But it's single family detached.
So it's the type?
It's the type.
Mm-huh.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is, is also there is.
Family back in.
Um. I guess the overarching goal has to be presented along with this, uh, not, not just a density grab. Because, uh, I keep referencing that when I spoke to a particular neighborhood a couple weeks ago, um, PUDs came up. And the density, and the general overview or thought of the PUDs was simply a, a, a grab for money and greed and developers and. It was just simply a density tool, which we've addressed and we've talked about here, so I think we're gonna have to formulate, is where I'm going with this. We have to really formulate a comprehensive message. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, can I, real quick, to the, in response to that. I, I think it was at the council work session, I forget when, we talked a little bit about Plan Chattanooga. We know that in this county, in the last eighteen years, we've built thirty, the private and CNE and other nonprofits have built thirty-eight thousand units. We know from how many kids are in our public schools, you know, we can do a rough estimation of demand over the next twenty years. So we know we need more places for people to live, um, and so I think, um, what, when your, your example. I mean, since I've been here two years this past January, y'all have rezoned a lot of multifamily, we've rezoned the Weiland site, you've rezoned the Kemco site, that. You can add up all of that density, and it's probably a good number of units, now to be honest with you, we don't know if half those will come out of the ground in the next five years. When you think when you zone it, it's gonna necessarily, you know, manifest itself, it doesn't always happen, but my point is just that. I think what we have to do through planning and through, you know, looking at the zoning ordinance is really try to anticipate. We're gonna have folks that are at the bottom of the income, the middle, folks that are downsizing, that don't, don't have children at home anymore. Every, we, we need to think about the, there's gonna be folks that want housing we haven't even considered yet. So the, the fact that we've had townhomes, a lot of townhomes, almost all the townhomes in the county are in the city of Chattanooga. And most, a lot of those have been built in the last five years, um, that's happening because people can't afford a single, you can't build a single family home. As affordably as you can build a townhome and then sell it, um, at a price point that people can afford. And so I think those are all absolutely issues that folks, it's complicated.
And they're also, let me add on, there's also gonna ask about infrastructure priorities, I mean, that's the number one. So. Argument we hear at any zoning case, at planning commission, and even as we move forward to council, is the, the shape and, and how our infrastructure is. Uh, and what it isn't more specifically, and also, uh, you know, obviously with that comes traffic, but. We, we, we have to have that when we go into the community meetings, we have to have some formulation or idea on how we address infrastructure. And put that, and wherever that falls in our, it should be a top priority.
Sorry Karen, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I think it's important to note that the, um. We have kind of two map, we have the equivalency zone, like the new zones could look a lot like your old zone. That's why implementing area plans after the adoption of the countywide comprehensive citywide area plans. So my, my thought is, what you laid out is, hopefully people have been involved in the citywide area, their area plan. They know what the comprehensive plan looks like, they've given input, so that is really setting up implementing plans, and then we took. It's, we put, take up to two years, because all these meetings and meeting with the commercial property owners and the neighborhood associations. To make sure we are, we are meeting with everyone to implement the area plans, we're trying to give ourselves time to do that. So, I think that's our hope, is that, it's not, this is the first time you're coming to me and talking about your zoning might look. Different from what it is now, it's that you've been involved in your area planning process, and, and we are trying to implement that. You know, that shared vision, so that's why we kinda have a little bit of the, after that happens, we're implementing plans. We do have this equivalency mapping phase where your current zone now has a similar new zone. And so we've got, that is also in play here, and that is one of the things that, um, council had asked for, um, was. Um, was this kind of, your, my old, or, this is an example, my current R one now. Um, outside, I'm in, um, Hickson, my current R one would be proposed to be RN one six. So we are working on what the new equivalent zoning map would be, that the new zone has. Um, equivalent standards and generally equivalent standards and uses, um, with the idea there would not be a lot of shift. Um, and this is not a, this, we have it work in progress, because, um, this still needs, um, kind of a lot of work on our end. An example is C three, a lot of C three went to Form Based Code, but we have a few C threes sitting out there, so we need to, what would be the equivalent zone. Um, R four looks a little different, the current R four looks a little different in the new zoning ordinance, so we're kind of breaking up some of the. Um, maybe into two different new zones to make sure that they're the equivalent zone, but this is something that we have, we're working on right now. So, that, and then we'll have a table, I think that's on our to-do list, um, that's at the end, I think. The, um, that we have a table to say, here's your current zone and here's the new equivalent zone, this should look a lot alike. My lot size might be a little different, but it's still mostly single family detached, or right now I have, I'm in a townhouse zone and my new zone's a townhouse zone. So that's what we're working on now, um, we've heard multiple times that we need an easy to understand frequently asked question or changes to the R one zone. Something that's pretty plain speak, that's on our list, and then when we have that set in place, um, after we have the new code adopted. We would like to do a work session again to, to talk about and really talk about this zone, old zone is this. New zone, the name might be different, but the standards and the uses should be pretty similar. Um, and so that's after, I think Dan mentioned at the beginning, this is after we get the new zoning code in place. Because we wanna be really clear that the, we, we've locked down what that new zone looks like and it's equivalent, so. Um, Lee is working on that, um, too, um, and just, we've been really clear, this is a work in progress.
Can you go back one, I think it's more of like, no, the table that shows.
Yes, and so, this is kind of, we showed a variation on this a couple times to you all, the current zone and the proposed zone. Um, and sorry, the asterisks there are outside the urban overlay for the six thousand, inside the urban overlay for the five thousand. So you'll see some of our working notes there, this is why it's a work in progress, the R four special zone. Um, a lot of institutional uses are in that zone, we have a zone that better fits for the institutional uses, but there's some just offices in there. That we need to make sure we get the right equivalent zone for, so we're gonna, um, we're gonna break those out, um, and we're thinking right now. We're, we're gonna be double checking all this, once we have that final draft in place, that the, if you're in R four and you're a. A lot of those are hospitals or schools, that, um, the institutional zone's the right equivalent zone, so this is kind of our checklist. Um, you'll see at the bottom is an example, the C three central businesses district zone. A lot of those went to Form Based Code, the ones that are not, we just need to check on what would be the, um, that proposed zone. So this is one of the things we're, um, we're working on now, um, and then once we have the final zoning in some place, just double check that everything is equivalent. So it should not look too different from your, um, from your former zone. Ready to move on?
Yes, I think we're throwing a lot at you today, it's cause we're trying to make you feel like we've gone through everything, at least.
The next steps is what, I think, a lot of concern, I think we've, we've understood what the zones and the new zones are. I think what we're wanting to make sure is, when do they become applicable, and when do they start to take, take shape? And one question that I had specifically was, once a, the draft zoning ordinance is, is adopted by council. They become eligible for application, correct?
Depends on our effective date, I believe.
And I think we had a ninety day.
Ninety.
Ninety days, so what is happening during the ninety days?
Part of it is, it's a developer or applicant, an owner who started an application will have time to finish it. Before, you know, that, if they wanted to be.
In the old zones.
Yeah, they would have time to, to finish that before the new code became effective, um, I think that's part of what's happening. What's happening in that interim is that we are finishing all this equivalency discussion with y'all. Um, we wanna, you know, be very certain of it from a legal standpoint, with our, uh, city attorney's office, that we know that we're not. Creating situations that are just gonna be untenable for someone, that we've taken a use away or something like that. Um, so we're, we're gonna be doing a lot of that mapping work.
And, and training staff too.
And we have a good lessons learned from the Form Based Code, we did the same for the Form Based Code where we, everyone was. Most people were C three or C seven and got rezoned to Form Based Code, we had a period where you could take advantage of your existing zone and start pulling permits and. Um, I think you sent audio a letter saying, I'm gonna use the old zone, or I wanna be ready to use my new zone, so I think. Um, overall, we have that history of doing that, and I think the idea would be, we would give folks that period again to do that.
Council, you had a.
It, let, let me throw something out here for the council, rather than having. The adoption date of when someone could apply for these new zones, like ninety days. Why couldn't we have it tied to the adoption of the map? Cause that's, that's when we're really gonna know we're ready to do business, it's when we have adopted the map.
We could have a problem with that if y'all didn't.
Which is where you've been, you've been directing and stating from the beginning, I believe.
Well, yeah, but, but I keep hearing ninety days, you know.
Chip, that's one of the reasons I just brought that up, cause I, I knew that, and it's a great concern.
We keep going past it and we're getting closer and closer every time, that's what it is.
Yeah, we're exactly, Council.
Um, and, and so, um, and one of the things we heard through a lot of our, um, a lot, got a lot of feedback on is. Be really clear and give folks plenty of time to respond ahead of time to, okay, the. When the adoption schedule's gonna occur, the effective date, when the new map goes into place, when we can pull zoning, um, you know, pull zoning requests for that. So we can lay out a really clear timeline when all that happens, because that's one of the things we're asked for is. People that are in the development community are just interested, just need plenty of time to respond, and just ask for a clear timeline early enough that they can plan for. So we can work on that.
Would that go district by district?
Well, I think we're.
Political boundaries, or would that go through area plans?
So right now, I guess, the map we're talking about is that equivalency map.
Okay.
Um, and so the equivalency map that we're preparing, that Lee's been working on is that citywide map. Um, and these are kind of, just say nonsense colors, but yes, the idea is that.
These are Easter colors. So, but, but just think of the map as sort of being a new map based on the new code.
So we would, we would be asked to vote on a new map.
Right.
A comprehensive map.
That's correct. Yes, and that is, um, that's kind of, let's go back to the end here, um, again, so the potential timeline on the map, we're saying is based on that ordinance adoption schedule. The, so we have a final ordinance, the ma, and then the map will need to go to the regional planning commission like any.
Are those the whole maps or the new?
This would be the new map, the new districts, right.
Okay, new district, okay.
Equivalent.
Yeah, um, and so for an example, the yellow on this map is the, a lot of that is the R, current R one area, the yellow out is gonna be. This would be the RN one six area now, so, um, that is what. Um, and so where we're not absolutely certain if it's equivalent, we're digging down to make sure we have that right zone.
And we will talk about this with our individual meetings.
Yes.
Sure?
Okay, that's super important, as we can drill down in each.
And very soon, I'm, just so y'all know, on the Plan Chattanooga land use maps. We are, um, working on a second draft with our consultants, and probably within the next month, we'll be able to sit down with district maps and, and look at those too. And I bet you're gonna see that, not a lot of changes, you know, on the, on the Plan Chattanooga, there's definitely places where y'all might wanna say, hey, this, this. Area of my district, I would like to see it be something different, and then we can go, oh, okay, let's, let's note that on the land use map in Plan Chattanooga, but that is the plan.
So for example, on this, um, just as kind of to the table, if you're currently zoned R one, the there's property currently zoned R one. The proposed equivalent zone is that RN one six or RN one five zone, which is the single family detached zone. So, um, of course it allows the ADUs, which we already have, but, so, um. You know, if you're R one, you're gonna be at the R one zone, it's just got, it's got the different name and, um, the lot size is gonna be different. But we'll put that in a table and try to do it in a one pager to help explain that.
I still don't see a seventy-five hundred lot size.
I don't see a three thousand.
Go to, go, we have a slide for it.
Yes, so that's where, that's, um, yes, and that's on the list. So, um, I can, well, we can skip to that.
We put it to the end because I didn't want us to get bogged down at the beginning.
We're still, we're, we're still circling, Council.
I copied everything that we had talked about the last time, where we're kind of checked on it or addressed it, um. And then still working on, these are the ones we talked about last time, and then, this is feedback, most of this was from the, um, our last meeting. Um, and then, so this is kind of general, and this one is focused more on like specific zoning districts.
We need y'all to give us a little more guidance.
And we have the three thousand and seventy-five are sitting here, because, um, we got recommendations on three thousand seventy-five. Removing and renaming the, um, traditional, one of the traditional zones and changing the neighborhood transitions. Those are the specific zones.
Essentially, you could create an overlay to maintain a seventy-five hundred square foot.
We've, we've discussed doing that specifically for Lookout Valley, because Lookout Valley is in a unique position of having all those septic sized lots. From when they were platted.
But so, part of my district also over on, uh, Mountain Creek Road, is falls in the same.
Yep.
Situation, and, and so rather than having, I don't know, two overlays, I just thought it would be much simpler to have a seventy-five hundred.
Mm-huh.
That means.
We, we, or we could do a district one seventy-five hundred square foot lot size.
Yeah, the Henderson overlay makes a lot of sense.
The Henderson overlay is.
You know, we've already done one overlay, it's on vacation, so.
If they've already, if they're already at that size, it seems like that would be an appropriate equivalency.
You're saying seventy-five hundred?
Yeah, because I, I personally don't love this idea of. Leading our city by dis, individual, making rules that are for one district or another district, and overlays, I think we need to be mindful. Of not going crazy with overlays, and they're, like, for the three thousand, there may not be any lots that are three thousand, but I'd like there to be a tool. So that districts that are okay with single family residential detached, but are also okay with smaller homes. If we could be building nine hundred square foot homes, we'd have a lot more opportunity for people to be living in, in single family homes.
I think. I think we're open, obviously, to, you know, this council's got the absolute power over zoning for every square inch of the city of Chattanooga. So we're open to whatever you decide on this, I would encourage you to look at this from, we, we haven't been working on this for over two years to keep things the way they are.
Right.
Uh, we've been. Uh, we've been working on this for over two years, because we're trying to solve a generational problem in the city of Chattanooga, and that's housing choice and the fact that your kids and grandkids can't afford to buy houses here. So if we've got an issue like Lookout Valley and Mountain Creek, there's a, there's an actual issue that you can point to in those areas that say, you know, you've got service, you've got spotty or service delivery in those areas, and you've got, you know, topographical challenges in Mountain Creek.
Infrastructure.
Our, we think it makes more sense to, if we're gonna do a seventy-five hundred square foot zone, to leave it there, rather than keep a seventy-five hundred square foot zone citywide.
Yeah, I think we could say where there's no sewer.
Right.
Seventy-five hundred, where there is sewer, six thousand.
Industry has to come into that conversation.
And Councilwoman, you're exactly right. We don't have nine cities, we've got one, and, you know, district lines change, they're, they're fluid. In fact, they're gonna change in a few months.
Right.
So, so it's better to look at these, and, you know, we don't do, we don't do nine area plans, we do a lot more than that. You know, we, we, we group things geographically how they make sense, and that's not always the same as, you know, nine roughly equivalent in population districts that might cut through neighborhoods and, you know, all that, even though we try to limit it. Your point's very well taken, that we wanna be very careful about making rules for parts of the city that make sense without regard to any other political boundary, but just like, even if Lookout Valley was split, a Lookout Valley overlay or a Lookout Valley and Mountain Creek overlay, even if, say, Councilman Dotley had half of it, um, it would still make sense for that area.
Character and the function than it is whose district.
Absolutely.
The only reason I'm bringing it up is because I'm very familiar with it, so.
Has the county changed the perk requirements?
What?
Has the county changed the perking requirements? That's the reason for seventy-five hundred square feet. It's because it would actually handle the perking, and it depends on whether there's a lot of rock or not, as to whether it'll actually work on seventy-four.
The county is at six thousand.
The county is at six thousand.
They've been there for over.
But not for septic.
On sewer.
Not on sewer.
On sewer, yeah. On sewer, I can see it, but there's a little more problem with septic.
Sure, yes.
Absolutely.
To Councilman Ledford's point about, about infrastructure and people's concerns about adequate infrastructure, I think an important talking point about density is making the most of the infrastructure that we have. And the more people that are using the sewer that we have versus having to expand out into a new area saves money for everybody, right? Or we can, yeah, I'll follow.
If you look at the sprawl from the eighties, that's largely, that's contributed a lot to, you know, that suburban sprawl stretching the sewers and the roads further and further out. It's what's part of the thing that's gotten us into the mess we're in now.
And it just can't pay for it. The, the, the revenue from those parcels can't pay for the.
Almost, I don't know what, sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I'm, I'm gonna wait, I've had it up for ten minutes, I'll wait.
Well, we're real informative.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, you need to go.
Okay, so. I, I'm, I'm just gonna go back to voting on this again, because I just wanna make sure we don't put the cart before the horse when we get ready to vote for this, right? So we're not gonna vote on any of that until we have it all laid out, right?
Well, now, you're talking about the equivalence, equivalency map, right?
Let's go with what, let's, I mean, when you say laid out, I think what you're saying is, y'all are saying the same thing. You wanna know, we're gonna adopt a code, and then you wanna know where that code is going to be applied on the map.
That's where you, that's where you.
Absolutely, right.
I mean, your neighbors.
Right, my neighbor, right.
You wanna make sure you understand. I don't, I mean, again, I, I think in your district, it's gonna be an easier question in some ways, because it's already a lot, it's already built out.
Okay.
But I think it's still something you're gonna wanna, your district, I think, is gonna be interesting as we talk about the future in Plan Chattanooga. Because Plan Chattanooga actually said a lot of corridors in your district should be more dense. Well, they're not gonna be more dense until we change the zoning. Right? So, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, so it's an interesting, it makes, I mean, that's why planning's interesting. Thing I was just gonna say is, the thing we need to remember is, again, I've, I've said this a couple of weeks ago, we are a regional economy, first of all. Folks are living in the county, working in the city, living in the next county over, working in the city.
A lot of people come.
Most of the jobs are all in the city. But just so you know, I, I don't know what percentage of the jobs, but I'd say eighty percent of all the jobs in the entire region are in the city. And so the reason I bring that up is, if you want traffic to be easier, if you want all those things, we need to figure out again how we house the kids in our schools, the people that are coming here for, and some people wanna live close to their job. We should encourage that.
That's absolutely right.
We should encourage them to walk to their job if they could, ride a bike.
Take an elevator down to.
Because that's, because we, if we just grow like, if we grow like Ameri, if we grow like Atlanta did during the eighties and the nineties, where everything went out.
Yeah.
It wasn't until the nineties that we started growing back inside the city of Atlanta.
Well, and we're stuck.
Yeah.
We're stuck, we cannot annex anymore. People have gotten to hear that story.
And that's why the wheeling site and the bend and all these sites that are kind of just all, you know, they need to be developed.
And if you drive around Councilman Ledford's district, you see a ton of Georgia license plates, and even a fair amount of North Alabama license plates.
There's a lot of people that wanna live in the city if they could afford it, if they have this newer construction, if it, you know, just, you know, and that's why we're trying to give a lot of, a lot of, uh, just flexibility within council's direction, you know, we don't wanna do things that are gonna upset folks, but we wanna, in the future, have more districts and.
Part of the equivalency mapping is to, the intention is to not have a lot of change. That this zone is the most similar zone, this older zone is the most similar zone to this new zone. And I just put up this table briefly, um, there are a lot of new zones that aren't even on the proposed zone list. Like you mentioned a three thousand square foot, it might be that we, there's not, we don't rezone anyone to that during the initial zoning process, but I can have the option to rezone. So I'm gonna just say maybe there's six zones or five zones that are out there that are not on a proposed zone list, because that's where, if Plan, the Plan Chattanooga process identifies this as an area of change, then we have those new zones to pull from after we're implementing the area plans. So, yeah, I think that's important to say that, that's where change is occurring. The equivalency zoning process, and that intention is, there's not going to be a lot of change. That's implementing the area plans and meeting with the neighborhood associations and the business owners and doing that hard work of all that, kind of that discussion is where cha, where we start to implement change.
So you mentioned equivalency zones, and that's just where we draw up a map and say, this is the best match. That doesn't rezone anybody, an equivalency map, correct?
Creating it does not. The intention would be to present it to be the new zoning map that partners with the new zoning.
When, when y'all vote for it, their zoning will change from R one to R one six.
Okay, well, that was, that was my question. I, I mean, creating an equivalency zoning map is a little benign. But when you actually, but you're saying when we vote for that map, then all of a sudden, everybody is rezoned to that map. Correct?
Very, very similar districts, which in most cases have exactly the same.
And, and the reason that question's important is because the purpose of that map is to keep us out of lawsuits.
Yeah.
Right, and remember.
We don't wanna be sued one way or another. We don't, you know, we want folks to be, I'm good. They just happen to have a new district color.
And that's what we talked about, we did, I guess, one or two rounds ago. We talked about zoning is the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. It's those two things, and while we've been spending more time talking about the zoning ordinance, this is where the zoning map is starting to come into play. So the zoning ordinance is gonna be sitting out there, but nothing's gonna be mapped to it. So we're changing the map, and that's where, yes, now the z, new zoning applies to my property. Um, and that's where we would have that phase in, very similar like we did to Form Based Code. We got rid of all that C three and C seven zone property and rezoned to Form Based Code. And we gave people a period of time to, uh, if they wanted, there was something in their older zone that is not in the new zone. I shouldn't think there's a lot of that, but we're gonna work on confirming that you could pull either zone.
Karen, you will not lose anything, any conditions that apply, or you're working under currently either.
The conditions that were put in place by council are carrying over.
So someone will worry about losing whatever condition or somewhat the adjacent property, conditions that were placed into a previous zoning still remain.
That's a good point. So like the C, um, C two is the zone that a lot of times gets conditioned. So the new zone might be the CC, um, commercial corridor zone, but it would in fact be with conditions. If you were with, had conditions, the conditions carry over and are still in play.
For example, you know, C two, but no adult establishments, that would be an example of a common condition that would carry over. You've passed it into law, so.
I, I hope through this process, y'all feel empowered. Right? That's what city planning is. We're planning for the future, we're making opportunities for people to live and thrive and have businesses, and we're making everybody happy.
And we're solving a problem.
Very positive.
A problem that's preventing people from living here.
Should I finish up kind of on the zoning ordinance, on what we need, because I think you mentioned the schedule?
Well, let me go around the, the table real quick. Councilwoman, um, are you good?
You know, as, as much as I can be at this point. Um, I, I, I think, um, I will get more clarity when I have a one-on-one, and I can actually open minds up and actually lay my eyes on it and see, and then even some spots, I might have to just drive by to make sure, you know.
I'll go with you.
You know how I do, you know, I like, I like to bust up sometime and just see.
Before Karen moves off, Chip, you, you any other, because you've had some really good points, I appreciate it.
Well, the, and I think we've, we've hit on them, tying the, tying the effective date to the adoption map.
Yeah.
But then also seeing, I think I would rather see a seventy-five hundred square foot zone as opposed to an overlay.
Well, we can talk about that in your map discussions, to see where, to your point about where's the sewer, where's it already? We can talk about that for sure.
And, and I can see where you would say that.
And we can show the sewer map as part of the meeting, Jenny, you do? Well, I would say I have confidence in the process. I mean, I still have questions, but I have confidence in the process. And I, just to put a fine point on that, I, I like the idea of tying a seventy-five hundred to a sewer availability, because also, that also works as a tool for us to say, there is no sewer here. You have to have a seventy-five hundred square foot lot. We will not allow you to put in a bunch of small, unless we have some kind of legal agreement about how the sewer will be paid for.
Sure.
There are some options there. That will help us work toward concentrating our density and not increasing our sprawl.
Just wanna learn as much as I can, so I can, uh, just ingest knowledge, so I can regurgitate it out to the community. That's, that's what I wanna do. But, but some good stuff, good stuff.
Good, good afternoon?
Yeah, I just had that my nails.
It's all good, your nails, I understand. We've covered quite a bit this afternoon, uh, before we move into the next section.
No problem. Yeah, I'm good.
No, we have a district version of every one of these maps, and we're gonna have individual meetings, and these maps are, you'll find, very useful, because it shows all the parcel sizes and everything.
Yeah.
We have one for you that.
I'm good.
We're gonna let you take it with you.
For us to understand further how it affects our, our respective district. We're doing one-on-ones, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, do you have anything else you wanna, before we move into the next?
New district.
All right.
Uh, well, I do have a question about this chicken fowl.
Chicken fowl.
This fowl they here, proposing as resting in chapter seven, animals of fowl instead of chapter thirty-eight?
Yes.
Okay. So that's just something that's kinda on.
Yeah, are we removing that then from this conversation and moving that conversation over to chapter seven? Is that the plan?
Yes.
And treating it as a separate issue?
Yes, I think that's our agreement, and Councilman Henderson and I are working on, um, an ordinance to bring that would be a standalone, separate from the zoning code up there.
Okay.
We've worked really hard to keep non-zoning things out of the zoning code.
Okay.
And give them their due attention, but do it, you know, individually.
Okay, so we should basically just kind of scratch that out of the, of this zoning ordinance.
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay, Karen?
Okay. And so, um, ultimately, this is kind of leading up to, um, getting, um, guidance from council on next steps and schedule. Um, so we're just, um, this is kind of what we as staff need to finish up, um, in the next two months, the completing review of comments. We've only had the one draft to make it clear. We've been working on the red line, finalized the red line to address comments, um, just formatting, adding new graphics, and then ensuring council comments have been addressed and communicated back to you. The intention is to take this list of everything we've heard and give some sort of response, either addressed and added to the section number, or however, you know, however we do it. But that's just to make sure that we, um, make, address every, um, all the comments you've given to us. And then, just some process, these are things that'll be more likely to go into the, um, the ordinance adopting it. There's just some process requirements in state law. We need to make sure that, um, other references that address the zoning ordinance, that we clean those up in other sections of code, um, and then work on that effective date schedule. Um, this is something you all mentioned, the importance of permitting and enforcement. We've already been through this, so I won't, um, repeat it, but just so you know, that's still on our task list. Um, and so we're still working through this, so that, um, LDO and permitting's ready when we've got the new ordinance in place. And then, that leaves us to kind of the process. Let me see, oh, looks like the slide I had was removed. Um, staff is asking to be able to work on the red line through the, um, through May. So that would give April and May to get everything packaged up into the updated red line, make sure comments are responded to, or meeting. Um, we have several internal meetings, meeting with Bill, just to make sure, um, we've kind of cleaned up everything. And then, um, that, there's several other items on here, but we were thinking perhaps through May, and then it, um, given updated the June Planning and Zoning Committee. But that is kind of where we're, we're thinking that gives us enough time to get a good, clean document out the door.
We can do one. I'm assuming we're gonna do a fourth workshop.
Sure, absolutely.
So do you wanna try to schedule that for June? Yes, ma'am, please.
So I'm, I'm looking at, I'm seeing this stuff. What's impact on budget?
So I think that you would ask, or someone would comment on a fiscal note. So I think the, one of the things is, we get ready through permitting and enforcement, make sure all the changes can be made, um, looking at the degree of change for the red line and how the response to LDO would need to do in staffing. We can present that, um, if there's any, um, thing at the, the next, the next workshop.
Thank you.
Make a note to do that.
Okay.
I think it's called a fiscal note.
Yeah.
Be prepared to find information.
So let's just keep in touch on the fourth workshop, and we'll, we'll run that through, and you'd council to agree on a date.
Okay.
We'll talk about it, and whatever works for y'all will be available.
Sure.
Next week is not good.
Next Tuesday, Sam, yes? We won't do that. Um, I have a real quick question, though, um, for Phil. Phil, we are following the path legally that we need to follow?
Yes, clearly, getting recommendations from the Planning Commission, where you're going from there, and then y'all adopt something in accordance with plans and studies that are done in that regard. That's what you should be doing.
Wanna make sure our Ts are crossed, our Is are dotted.
Yes.
Very good.
And I am at least discussing matters with lawyers here regarding, uh, issues regarding our special exceptions. I've sent versions of that to Karen and Dan and Chris on here as well, that we need to look at. There've been concerns over what your definition of family is in the code, and then what your definition for residential homes for the handicap is in the code, which are, need to be compliant with our current state law.
Yeah.
Can we have a special session or a section in our next workshop on that specifically?
Because that group home, we know, was something that came up more than twice.
Yes.
And we've got some federal guidance on that from Friday.
Yes, Chris and I talked about creating a, a fact sheet, so to speak, on that as well, so that we're able to share that information.
So we're gonna define family? Is that what you're saying?
It's not about that, it's about the hap, the houses.
The, 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 no, 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 we're not gonna do that.
We're not gonna define, man?
No.
I can help you, but.
We are going to.
We're going back to chickens and eggs, and brother and nag, it's a chicken.
No, we are gonna define, uh, uh, with the help of the federal government, um, definitions of halfway houses and whatnot.
And I think that will help with permitting and enforcement.
Because that is a citywide.
Other times.
Using issue, and, and I don't think, really, I'm not where I need to be on information, so, but I know that we've been having conversations. Looks like our meeting's over.
Well, if y'all would like to take one of our district maps with you, or we can just bring them to the meeting.
Do we have, are we, have anything, we have more?
That is, well, this was the feedback we already talked about. Again, if there was something, we tried to take pretty good notes as we, the past few meetings. If there's something we missed, we wanna hear to make sure we addressed it. And then, um, just the new zoning map, we, um, talked most about that, just to let you know that we still are, that's, um, we're working on that too. So that's it. We just wanted to make sure we got to the schedule.
Very good. Council, you have been patient through a third workshop. Your questions and input has been incredible. Insight, thank you so much. Is there any other questions or comments you need for staff besides Chris and you? Chris, it's yours.
Please stick around if you'd like. Please stick around if you'd like to schedule your one-on-one.
Yes, please schedule your one-on-one, because that is going to be imperative to, to understanding what we're undertaking here. So we are adjourned.
Can somebody just send me some dates?
Yes.
The days of the week are generally better for you early.
Usually two days. If we're not having a workshop, like every twelve, I mean, like, twelve to three.